I think it's up, I'm turning it over to you, right, Mr. Ryman?
I think we're ready for the Pledge of Allegiance led by some of our kindergarten Penguins tonight. So this will be great.
Let's do it.
Are you guys ready? All right, hands on our hearts. Ready? I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well done. Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much, Mr. Ryman and the amazing Moraine Penguins. Let's go ahead with our roll call.
All right, President McIntyre.
I'm here, good evening.
Vice President Campbell Boytow.
I am here.
Treasurer Stewart.
Here.
I'm here, Secretary Meyer. Trustee Frazier.
Here.
Trustee Mabry.
Here.
Trustee Maurer.
Here.
You're all here.
All right, great, we are all here and we are joined by our superintendent, Dr. Weber, our central office leadership team, and some amazing families and students and staff. Let's go ahead with our adoption of our agenda.
All right. Are you picking me up, all right? Lean in a little bit. All right. I bring motion 51, that the agenda be adopted as presented. Support.
Okay, we have a motion properly presented by Dr. Campbell Boytow, supported by Ms. Meyer. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Next, our consent resolutions.
I bring motion 52. That the board accept the consent items for approval as follows. 5A, minutes of November 11th, 2025, Board of Ed meeting. 5B, minutes of November 11th, 2025, closed session meeting of the Board of Ed. 5C, overnight and/or out-of-state field trip requests. 1, NHS Model UN Conference in East Lansing, Michigan from March 13 through 15, 2026. 2, NHS Model UN Conference in Chicago, Illinois, from February 5 through 8, 2026. 3, NHS Model UN Conference in Grand Rapids, Michigan from March 4 through 7, 2026. 5C, 4, Alpine Ski Team State Finals in Boeing Falls, Michigan from February 21 through 23, 2026. And finally, the fifth out-of-state or in-state field trip is the Alpine Ski Team Boeing Mountain Invitational in January 2026. 5D, NHS addition and renovation projects totaling 12,470, excuse me, $12,473,741 as outlined in the November 7th, 2025 OCH construction recommendation funded through the 2023 Sinking Fund. 5E, Meads Mill Phase II Furniture Purchase totaling $69,262.45 is outlined in the November 11th, 2025 TMP recommendation funded through bond 2023. And finally, 5F, bill warrants totaling $7,290,424.34.
Support.
All right, great, we have a motion properly presented by Dr. Campbell Boytow, supported by Mr. Frazier. Just for the audience's benefit, these consent resolution items are items that we've read under separate cover or discussed in previous meetings. So let's go ahead with our vote. Do you have a comment?
You know, I just wanted to make a comment on, let's see, it was 5D and 5E, the addition and renovation, and then the furniture purchase for Meads Mill. I don't think Steve Banchero is here tonight, but I just wanted to give a little thank you to Steve Banchero. He met with us at our Committee of the Whole meeting last week and ran through all of the details from those. It's, and one of the things that I really appreciate is the detail and the description of how the bond money versus the sinking fund money and making sure that we're utilizing all of the different, you know, pots that we can. And he really broke that down for us really well, so I just wanted to bring that up really quickly.
Yeah, thank you for lifting that up to run through a $12 million spend. That's a big dollar number, right?
It was really big, but he had it, you know, really broken down by line items and, you know, the detail of each item, so it was enlightening to go through all of that.
I'd like just to also acknowledge that both the sinking fund and the bond were voted on and supported by the community. So these are items that you funded, that you allowed us to spend money, your money, on upgrading the buildings for your children, and that the learning is only enhanced by all of these kinds of upgrades and renos that are underway. And so, you know, as a board, we recognize that we're very grateful to the community for supporting those initiatives.
Yeah, thank you. No, that was great. All right, all in favor? Aye? Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Next, we have our communications.
Yes, we received communications at NPSBOE@northfillschools.org as well as the November Northville Youth Network Program Report.
Thank you, I wanted to highlight that we're seeing an increase in parent referrals through Northville Youth Network. I think that's really awesome, that parents know that that's a resource for support and services and referrals, and so was glad to see that. Good utilization of those services. All right, Mr. Ryman, we are ready for you and the Penguins.
All right. One of the biggest exciting factors is to find out if any of our students, as they try to go behind the screen, trip over the cord that's behind there, so we'll find out in just a second. I'll tell you, for those of you that I have not met before, my name is Joe Ryman and I am the very grateful principal here at Moraine Elementary. We have a wonderful school, we're so excited to have our school board, our superintendent, community family members, our central office team. We also have teachers and alumni in the audience tonight. And so, a staff member asked me earlier today, are you excited to show off all the special things about Moraine at the board meeting tonight? And it let me pause for just a second to recognize that not all districts have board meetings in schools, and I'm so grateful that in Northville, we have that as a part of here. But I will stop very short of saying that we're going to be able to share all the special things about our school in one presentation. You'll get a glimpse of like the tip of the iceberg, those pieces, but it's those little interactions from a day-to-day, and we've had board members that have toured our building to see those special things that happen within our school on a day-to-day basis. And so, we're just very grateful that our community is here, that our board is here tonight to share out some of those pieces from the evening. When we talked to the students and to the staff, some of the things that came up that we wanted to make sure that we shared was around the student experience. So you'll see a little bit of that tonight, but you also see pieces of our community, leadership, service, and inclusion, all parts that are very important to us here at Moraine Elementary. As you walk our hallways, you'll notice that our theme for the year is Building Leaders, Building Leaders Through the Theme of Legos, which is super fun. I encourage you, if you haven't walked by our entryway, all of our staff members have creatively been turned into Lego minifigs, and it's something that pauses students every day on their way into school, so just kind of a neat piece of it. Legos are pretty inclusive, whether you're someone that likes to follow directions to a T or go outside the box and create, we're finding that our students this year are really embracing that theme, whether it's the Halloween theme or making designs in our library every week. There's a lot of things that we're doing with them, we even wanted to make sure that as being good hosts, we've created, oh, I need the clicker, oh, this will be perfect. Perfect timing. So we knew that we were welcoming the board today, so we wanted to make sure that we gave them the same honor of turning all of them into Lego minifigures. So, which, you never really know what the world thinks you look like until you have yourself turned into a Lego minifigure. So I was grateful that mine had less gray hair than I actually have in real life, so that was pretty good. But what I'll say is, I'm so excited for our students, they've created four videos for you guys to see this evening, so I'm going to hand the microphone over to them so they can share a little bit more about our school.
Good afternoon and welcome, we're Izzy, Niggy, and Vivian, and today we're pulling back the curtain to give you an aesthetic look at what it's truly like to be here, a student here at Moraine. More than just classes, our school experience is built around powerful core principles. First up, we focus on leadership. You'll see today that every student here is encouraged to take ownership, whether it's leading a group project, setting goals for ourselves, or simply modeling great behavior in the classroom. Being a Moraine student means being a leader in your own life and in our community.
Our journey is about growth, and that leads us to our next principle, learning through challenges. You'll see us tackling tough assignments, not because it's easy, but because we know that real learning happens when you push past your comfort zone. We don't shy away from mistakes, we see them as crucial steps on the path to mastery. And we never go it alone, that's where teamwork comes in. Watch as we collaborate in the lab, work together in the library, and support each other during sports practice. Our success isn't just individual, it's about lifting each other up. Teamwork is the engine that drives Moraine forward.
Finally, everything we do is about building character, the way we treat our peers, the respect we show to our teachers, the commitment we build into our work, that all shapes who we become. We believe that integrity, resilience, and kindness are just as important as test scores. So stick around, over the next few minutes, you'll get to see leadership in action. Learn us, learning through challenges, celebrate the power of teamwork, and watch how we are all committed to building character every single day. Next, we're celebrating another thing that makes our school special, our strong culture of community. Oh, okay.
Hi, I'm a Moraine Penguin, my day starts when I walk into school with a big smile. I hang up my backpack, say hi to my friends, and get ready to learn.
In the morning, we go to Humanities. We build cool things and solve problems instantly. In PE, we run, jump, and play games that keep us strong.
Hi, did you know that at Moraine, we are all leaders? I help my classmates and show kindness every day. In class, we get big challenges, I love asking questions and thinking hard.
We don't do it wrong, we work together, we share ideas and help each other grow.
One of my favorite places is the library, we explore amazing stories and learn about the world.
At the end of the day, we pack up and say goodbye. We leave proud of what we did and excited for tomorrow.
That's the day in the life of a Moraine Penguin.
Next, we're celebrating another thing that makes our school special, our strong culture of community. My name is Elsie, and this is my friend Annabelle Simone. Our community spirit is evident in every event, whether we are celebrating diversity during International Night, bonding at an event like this past Week at Breakfast with a Buddy, or working together during a weekend campus cleanup. In this upcoming video, you'll see interviews of students and their perspective on the community events and of the upcoming bond work happening at Moraine.
What are your names?
Adeline.
Kayla.
What is your favorite part about the Fun Fair event in the summer?
Definitely arcade games.
I think it's like the coins.
What makes this event unique to our school?
Like the food trucks that come. I get to hang out with my friends like not in school.
Your name?
My name's Snowpea.
How do you think the community events and fundraisers help impact our school?
I think they help impact our school by letting students at our school and family members spend time with their family and friends and learn new things.
What's your favorite community event?
I like the roller skating.
What's your favorite part of the roller skating?
I like that you can hang out with your friends, and my dad can help me learn new things like roller skating.
Monica.
Have you ever been to fall flying?
Yes.
What's your favorite part of fall flying?
My friends and the games.
Why?
Because I get to see my friends while I'm doing games.
How do you feel about the new playground equipment?
I like it.
What makes it so fun?
You can play with it, and it's fun.
Hi, what is your name?
Miles.
Have you seen the kitchen before?
Yeah.
Don't you think that's a little small and cramped for the people who prepare our lunches?
Yeah.
What if I told you that we're getting a new lunch, what would you say about that?
Uh, well, that's good. Bigger.
Yeah. Are you excited for better lunches?
Yeah.
Your name?
Violet.
How do you feel about standing in the rain when you get picked up or dropped off from school?
Sad, because I get wet, and I don't like getting wet.
What if I told you, our school, Moraine, is getting a rain cover for the front of our school?
I feel good because then I won't get wet.
Hi, what is your name?
Weiman.
Don't you think that the lunchroom needs more sunlight and brightness?
Yes.
What if I told you that the lunchroom is going to get redone, is going to be finished around next year? What would you say to that?
I would say I would be happy.
Okay, bye.
Good evening, my name is Madison Frage, and these are my friends Maya and Ally. And today, we are going to go behind the scenes to show you one of the coolest things about our school culture, the leadership program. We don't just talk about leadership here, we recognize it, celebrate it, and reward it. A leadership ticket is our way of catching students doing awesome things. And what exactly are those awesome things? It all comes down to one big thing. Tickets are given out when we see students demonstrating the seven habits of highly effective people. That means putting first things first, thinking win-win, or sharpening the saw. Teachers are always looking for examples of us using those habits to make great choices in the classroom and in the hallways. Whether you're helping a classmate pick up dropbooks, sitting with someone who looks lonely, or just holding the door open, showing kindness around our school is a huge job at Moraine. In this video, you'll see exactly how students earn their leadership tickets and how these small actions make a big difference every day.
Hi, my name's Ally, what's your name?
Mikey.
Okay, how did you get this, how did you get your leadership ticket?
So when I was taking the wagon back from lunch recess, I, um, there's, there were some of Ms. Martell's students, and I let them go first, and then Ms. Davis gave me a compliment, and Ms. Gatta gave me a leadership.
That's good. Oh, do you have any advice for other kids to get leadership tickets?
Well, just be kind and be a leader and be nice.
Okay, that's very good. How do you think we can make the school a better place?
Uh, just, well, be kind, I would help people in need and just help the other people like this special.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, I'm Maya, what's your name?
Emerson.
Okay, hi Emerson, how did you earn this leadership ticket?
By being quiet.
All right, very good. Do you have any advice for other people to earn leadership tickets?
Yes. They could be quiet and listen.
Okay. What is one way you think our school could be better?
By being very quiet.
Good job, thank you Emerson.
Hi, my name is Madison, what's your name?
Audrey.
Okay, how did you get this leadership ticket?
I got it by being good with a yes teacher.
Do you have any advice for other people about how to get tickets?
When there's somebody in the school that's, maybe you should be kind to them.
And last one, how could your, like, school be a better place?
If we were a little bit more kind to each other and safe.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Ally, what's your name?
My name is Miles in 4th grade.
Okay, how did you get your leadership ticket?
So there was some trash outside of the school, and I saw it, so I picked it up and put it in my mom's car.
Okay, do you have any advice for other kids to get leadership tickets?
Be kind, always help other people, and those are some things you can do.
Also, how do you think we can make this school a better place?
Um, like, maybe, like, show, like, way more kindness, because we have a lot of kindness, so I'd like more kindness.
Okay, thank you. My name is Maya, and I'm here today with, what's your name?
Talia.
Okay, so how did you earn this leadership ticket?
I was, um, so I was doing peer pals with Evelyn and me, and then since we were quiet, the teachers, like, we were respectful also, the teachers gave us a leadership ticket because those were like good examples of, like, leaders.
Do you have any advice for other students to get leadership tickets?
You can, like, be respectful and be quiet or, like, help the school out with something like that.
How is one way you think our school could be a better place?
We could, like, uh, like, be, like, better, like, friends and include everyone like that.
Thank you so much for your time.
Hello, my name is Zane. And while we all heard how amazing our classroom teachers are, and they are incredible, we wanted to shine a light on other people who make this school feel like home, the ones who teach us valuable lessons every day. Even without whiteboard, the folks who might not have teacher in their name, but, in their title, but who show us things like kindness, compassion, responsibility, and resilience. We spent the week walking the halls, catching up with the custodians, the front office staff, the cafeteria team, and everyone in between, interviewing them, to find out what makes their job so special and how they truly make a difference in our lives. It's time to meet the incredible people who shape our school community and see the lessons happening outside the classroom. Every single day, incredible things happen within these walls, moments of learning, growth, and connection that shape who we are. While we often think of amazing classroom teachers, there's a whole constellation of unsung heroes who help us teach us, who help teach us, guide us and inspire us every single day. They may not have all have the title of classroom teacher, but believe us, they are all educators in their own way. They teach us kindness when a custodian patiently helps a frustrated student open a locker. They show us compassion when a front office staff member gently guides a lost new student. They model responsibility when a librarian explains the importance of returning books on.
Hi, my name is Zane, what is your name?
James.
Who is a staff that's a leader in this school?
Mrs. Byers.
And what does she do that makes her a leader?
She helps, she pulls kids aside and helps them with zone regulation.
Is there anything else you'd like to tell about her?
She's a great teacher at our school and helps us with leadership.
Hi, my name is Shrek.
Hi, my name is Cameron.
Who is the staff member at Moraine that you think is a leader?
I think that Mrs. Sapp and Mrs. Wallace are the best teachers.
How are they a leader at our school?
Because they're very awesome and they're very talented.
Um, what should everyone know about them?
Um, they give hugs to each other.
What's her name?
Athena.
Who is a leader that's a staff in this school?
Ms. Nicole.
Why is that?
Because she's super kind.
What is something that Ms. Nicole does?
She, uh, gives out breakfast.
Ms. Shrek, what's your name? And Alexa? Uh, who do you think's a great staff member at Moraine? Uh, why do you think the, um, such a great staff member at Moraine, and what makes them a leader?
She helps out a lot in this lunchroom here. She probably comes here like every single morning to help out, make our lunchroom as clean as possible.
What should everyone know about them?
Ms. Tiffany is just really kind, and she helps out our school, and she's really important.
My name is Shrek, what's your name?
Caroline.
Who do you think's a great staff member at Moraine?
Ms. Lemon and Ms. Bart.
What makes some great staff members at Moraine?
They help greet people every morning and they help with the nurse.
What should everyone know about those two staff members?
Um, they're really nice.
Hi, my name is Zane, what's your name?
Abby.
Angelique.
Who is a leader that's a staff in the school?
Ms. Harkin.
Why is that?
Because she gives us nice bookstrokes.
Um, what is her job? What does she do in the school?
She gives us, she's the librarian in the school.
All right, and that'll conclude our portion of the presentation, but we wanted to make sure that we gave an opportunity, if there was a board, to ask any questions of our students.
All right, who's got a question? I was wondering, so I'm curious if you raise your hand if you've gotten a leadership ticket. Fantastic. And then, my question is, what happens when you get a leadership ticket? We saw people getting them and what you got them for, but what happens when you get one?
All right, just a few of you guys.
Um, when you get a leadership ticket, you write your name and grade on it, and you turn it into the office.
Um, to add on to Maya, once you turn it into the office, once a month, I think it's the Student Lighthouse Team, they pick like seven or eight people out, and they take a picture of them together. It was out on the hall when you walked in, and it had last month's, and they take a picture, and it's going to fill up throughout the year of like the kids that get pulled.
Um, it's basically, if you get a leadership ticket, you have a chance to do something with Mr. Ryman. Like last year, if you got a leadership ticket, you were able to put it in for some people in needs, like dogs, old people, like grandpas and grandmas in like hospitals, and, like, and children in the hospital.
Thank you. So I didn't have a question, but it's more of a comment. At the beginning of the presentation, I was super impressed that one of the comments was "real learning takes place when you push past your comfort zone." So maybe I do have a question. Who can give me an example of some time that they have pushed themselves past their comfort zone? Who can give me an example of some time that they have pushed themselves past their comfort zone at school?
Um, sometimes if I'm like scared to answer a question because like I'm scared I'm gonna get it wrong in class. But then I always like would just try and I'll just put up my hand and I'll like say, oh, like I'll say the answer. Even if I get it wrong, I just like keep on trying until I get it right.
Sometimes in my math homework, um, I can't do a question and I'm gonna ask for help, but I try to like read it again and I answer it.
Anybody else?
Sometimes if, um, I'm stuck on a question and, um, I'm afraid to ask for help or maybe I'm like scared. I always remember that like the teachers are just there to help me and they're not gonna like judge me if I need help on a question.
Um, to be a leader, um, pushing out of your comfort zone, you need to be, um, like brave. Because let's say, oh, you're sixty percent sure you got this question right and you're scared to do it in front of everybody. Then just say, um, then do the question and your teacher will tell you what's wrong and then you can fix your mistake.
That's awesome. Thank you. Sounds like you guys have some great growth mindsets here.
All right.
Go ahead, I'm gonna have to speak.
I think it's amazing that, um, all of the ways and places in this school and outside the school and coming in and going out and in the hallways. All of those places you find, um, opportunity to do a small kindness that makes a big difference. And I think that's a huge lesson. It doesn't have to be, you know, horns and whistles and balloons and, you know, a parade. But it could just be the smallest little kindness or the help or picking up that piece of trash and putting it in your mother's car. That really makes a difference. And so I'm wondering, does anybody have, uh, you know, an example of a very small, maybe hardly anybody noticed that you did it, but it was meant a lot to the person you helped?
Like opening the door for somebody or like sitting or like playing someone at recess?
Kinda like Ally's, like when we come in from recess, you hold the door so everyone can get in and nobody gets left behind.
Like saying good morning to someone or like greeting them?
Like if someone looks like they have a bad day and when you like say like a compliment to them, they're like spread the kindness to other people.
Um, like just sitting with someone who looks lonely?
Inviting someone to play with you at recess?
Um, like being nice to people and sitting with the buddy bench on with someone. And like picking up a soccer ball from recess if no one picks it up.
I honestly, all the questions I had written down have already been asked, so I'm not gonna take it for the sake of time and I'm not gonna labor the point. But it was a great presentation. I really appreciate this wonderful glimpse into Moraine and all the wonderful things happening here. I have a question about the bond. Um, I mean, it's a beautiful school, right? And I really liked the highlights about the lunchroom expanding, um, or not the lunchroom, the kitchen itself. Um, so I am curious, from the kid's perspective, what is it like or what do you think it will be like to go through these growing pains, I suppose, of construction? And how do you think that might be related to resilience?
Um, I feel like it's gonna be kind of exciting, but, um, kind of like confusing. Because you don't know really what it's gonna turn out to be, but you know it's gonna be something better than the last time.
Um, kinda like Drake, um, you don't know what it's gonna be, but you should like think, oh, this is gonna be really good for our staff that work in the kitchen.
I think it'll be exciting because there's gonna be a lot more room and new place, new areas to see.
Um, I think we're gonna have to be like mindful if like they're doing it while we're in school and we need to like be careful in case like we don't wanna get in their way.
Um, I think it's gonna be really exciting because, um, like always try something new.
I think it'll be exciting watching it build up.
Um, I think it's related to resilience because, um, sometimes that you have to like change things and you have to keep on like working, pushing through things. Because sometimes you have to go through things and it's like different and hard.
I think, um, it's gonna be a big change, but it's gonna be a good change because it's gonna make our staff happy and it's gonna make our school a better place.
None of them said messy. It's gonna be, it's gonna be messy. Yeah, and what I'd like to say is thank you to each of you. And Mr. Kling is our our chief financial officer here. In the video that you did on the bond aspect of it, there's so many people behind the scenes, or I like to say BTS, behind the scenes. Who, ooh, hot mic, who don't ever really get to hear it or see it. They do the building, the designing, all of that, and they may see some pictures. But I really think tomorrow at the meeting, we're gonna show your video, uh, to the team behind the scenes, the architects, the construction managers, and so on. So well done. And the video format that you used tonight, what I really enjoyed about it is how many people you uplifted through the whole school. And the choices that you made in doing so. And I also like the fact that your parents and relatives will have a keepsake of that work in this magical moment of your lives, uh, because you're gonna get older. And, uh, the answers that you had to the questions were absolutely brilliant. So sincerely, thank you very much. And what I'd also like to say is we have a tradition here and I'll get the picture to Mr. Ryman. But any student, parent, brother, sister, aunt, uncle who's in the crowd, if you could come behind our Board of Education, we're gonna get a quick picture for us. And Mr. Ryman, uh, wonderful. Thank you so much. I know we still have some of our kindergartners out there, so it would be great for them and their families to come join us for a photo. That would be awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Hold up our little Lego. I know. Right there. You can come up and. We've got space, right? You know, my daughter Lila was at your house today. You weren't there. You missed. Come on up. You guys can scooch that up.
Okay, it's my pleasure to give out the first A B C D award. This is for, uh, Ms. Olivia.
Hold on, are we ready? We'll start with superintendent's report. Do you have anything to start with?
No, I'll just, uh, go ahead and kick off the, uh, above and beyond the Call of Duty awards. This is another piece, um, I think Joe Ryman said this, but it was actually, when I was walking into Moraine, it it hit me. Uh, it'll be four years ago this April that I came into Moraine, um, to be offered this position. And one of the things that stood out to me at that particular meeting were the A B C D awards. And the intentional lifting up of our staff, uh, from our board members and obviously the community, but for the board to read them. Um, and a picture and so on. Uh, Ms. Peck, thank you for continuing to elevate this and making sure that people get recognized for their great work. What I will say is Evan, my guy, has blocked a piece of tape in the, you'll see a little square tape there. So once, uh, you get that, if the board member and the staff member could please stand on that taped dot, that way we're making sure that, uh, your loved ones at home are seeing you. So thank you.
All right, thanks. All right.
Okay. Now I will start with the first award. Uh, this is for Ms. Olivia Ren. Uh, Ms. Ren is a third grade teacher here at Moraine. And Ms. Ren was, uh, nominated by, uh, parent. Um, and it's submission, uh, as this follows, it says, uh, Mrs. Ren consistently goes above and be- above the call of duty as an educator. And we'd like to recognize her for her outstanding work. She's an excellent communicator, effectively balances individual student needs with classroom needs and makes learning fun. Our child had Ms. Ren for third grade last year. The confidence Ms. Ren instilled in our child went beyond what we thought was even possible. We're so thankful our child had her as teacher. Our child wrote a thank you note to Ms. Ren at the end of the last year. We took a picture of the note to save as a memory and we decided to share some of the snippets of the note here because it showcases Mrs. Ren's impact on our child so well. Here's from the letter. Dear Ms. Ren, I've had the best year ever. You're always so supportive and helped me with all my problems. My favorite things we did this year was having lunch with you, book club, and win-win. I always look forward to mornings, we, I, I always look forward to morning meetings because typically there would be different categories, which gave us a chance to get to know you and our classmates better. I'm going to miss third grade so much and especially you. I always get inspired by you every day because I really want to be a teacher when I grow up. I know you always put in so much work and I really appreciate it. So thanks to Ms. Ren for being such a positive influence on students at Moraine. Is Ms. Ren here?
I think so.
Yep.
I think so, yeah. Congrats. Okay, I get the pleasure of lifting up Ms. Katie Grimm, who is a research room teacher here at Moraine. Is, uh, Ms. Grimm here? Oh, okay, well, thank you. Um, even still, uh, she was nominated on behalf of a parent who said, Katie has worked with my son for the past several years and supported him through many different challenges and changes with school. She's a fantastic communicator to parents and wants to support kids in any way she can. We recently had the opportunity to meet with her and review the support for my son and to just clear how much care and personal commitment she puts in everything she does. We could not imagine going through all these years without her and I just wanted to find another way to say thank you to Katie. My son and our family are better because of the work she does every day. Thank you, Katie. Thank you to Ms. Grimm. That leaves me next. And I get to lift up Ms. Amy Heisner from Thornton Creek. Not here today. I'm getting the the shake and head no from Mr. Jewett back there. Um, interestingly enough, when I was coming here tonight, I told my own kindergarten son, who goes to Thornton Creek, that I was going to present Mrs. Heisner this award. He does not have Mrs. Heisner, but he knows of her and he was very, very excited. So clearly she is famous. So this was submitted on behalf of, um, a parent who writes, my son has Ms. Heisner for kindergarten. It has been a big transition for him, learning and adapting to structured play and in the classroom. In turn, it has been very challenging for us as his parents, worrying about him struggling and his behavior at school. Ms. Heisner has gone above and beyond to support our son and his social emotional learning. She was very communicative with us with both good and bad news. On a day where I was in person with Ms. Heisner and feeling particularly emotional, she supported me and was so encouraging with open arms. It's pretty special when your child loves their teacher so much that he wrote her a note telling her how wonderful she is and that he loves her even with having challenges with behaviors and a lot of chats with her. That to me means that she cultivates an atmosphere of learning, both academics and social emotional learning with warmth. We feel grateful that our son was gifted Ms. Heisner as his K teacher. So thank you, Ms. Heisner.
Okay, I would like to present to Mrs. Savage, you knew it was gonna be me. Mrs. Savage is here. So this is on behalf of a parent who made this submission. We have been fortunate to have Jennifer Savage teach both of our children. Our son is now in first grade and our daughter is in her second year at O V S with Mrs. Savage. You can feel her warmth as she opens a door and her heart to her students every day. This past spring, Mrs. Savage came out to a Little League game to watch several of her former preschool students who are now in the first grade. The excitement this brought to our kids was priceless. A week ago, when my first grader had the day off of school, she invited him to come into her class and be a mystery reader to a sister's preschool class. She connects with her students well beyond the months she teaches them, which has an everlasting impact on the students and their families. We love her and will be sad to leave her classroom when our daughter moves on to elementary school. She's the absolute best and we are grateful to know that her bond with our children will last beyond their years at Old Village. Thank you, Mrs. Savage.
Come on up.
Yay.
Awesome. Thank you. All right, this is our first opportunity for public comment. Do we have any public comment cards tonight? All right, thank you. Um, the next up, we have, uh, I will hand it to, I think, you, Dr. Campbell Voitel, for our next motion.
So we have a new hire?
Yeah, number, yep, number ten, new hire. Yep.
Oh, okay. Well, that's lovely. I bring motion fifty-three that the board award a one-year non-affiliated contract to Crystal Muhammad, Director of Instructional Programs and Services for the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six school year, as presented.
Support. Gosh, I think I heard two people. Okay, so I have a motion properly presented by Dr. Campbell Voitel. I think I heard Ms. Mauer. Okay. Um, Ms. Peck, very excited to learn. I'm so eager. I was sitting at the edge of my seat just waiting to jump up. I've already advised Crystal that I'm gonna embarrass her so much. So, um, we'll start with, Crystal, can you come up here, please? Do you want me to be on the dock?
That way we can see you.
We're going on the dock. Just get on the dock.
The square.
Do you want me to present to the group or to the board?
Whatever you'd like.
Very confused. Do a full circle. So we have some fans here today, uh, but before we get to them, I I'd like to first celebrate, uh, Crystal Muhammad and make a recommendation to the Board of Education. I'm gonna do so by telling you about, um, the journey that we had, uh, to get to this place um, and to have this wonderful, uh, fantastic candidate in front of you. So, um, as you know, uh, the Director of Instructional Services, Programs and Services recruitment and hiring was a very thorough and inclusive process. Um, uh, we we definitely wanted to find the right leader for this position. It's it's critical and it's it's a very important position. We had, uh, even even though the position was open in the middle of the year, we had, we still had eighty quality candidates that came to us. So we were, we were quite pleased with that showing, um, and we went through multiple rounds of interviews, um, providing for a wide range of, uh, constituent groups to engage directly with our candidates. Um, as you can see, we came to some conclusions that we're presenting to you tonight and and that is our recommended candidate, uh, Crystal Muhammad. Crystal has over twenty years of experience in K-12 education, including eight years, um, in administrative leadership right here in Northville Public Schools, at Northville High School. She has a proven track record in curriculum development, instructional program oversight, and data-driven.
Head of School here in Northville for the International Baccalaureate Middle Year Program. She has ensured compliance and program fidelity, and I can attest to that, having worked with her for at least seven years. Crystal crosses every T and dots every I. In addition to her leadership at Northville High School, Crystal serves three years as a principal in the K-8 arena, including the founding of a K-8 STEM Academy in a local Wayne County School District, and has several years of classroom teacher and instructional coach experience for teachers. Crystal is recognized for fostering continuous improvement, building strong relationships, championing diversity, equity, and inclusion initiatives, and driving student achievement by ensuring a viable and sustainable curriculum. And I say that slowly because she talked so passionately with all of our groups about the importance of a viable and sustainable curriculum, and she uses good words, and she follows it up with really good explanations of what that looks like. We are so thrilled and fortunate and grateful to welcome Crystal into the role of Director of Instructional Programs and Services. Her depth of experience, visionary leadership, and unwavering commitment to excellence make her an incredible asset to our team. On behalf of the Central Office Administrative Team, I recommend that the Board of Education approve a non-affiliated administrator contract to Crystal Muhammad for the 25-26 school year. Any questions?
No questions.
I have a question. I mean, can you clone yourself to be at the high school at the same time?
I'm an identical twin, so I can't do that.
That is so true. I think Tony is asking the same thing as well.
Problem solved.
I just wanna say, I'm really excited for you to have seen you grow over the past eight years, right, and just to see, just as a mom and as your professionalism also, and I, you know, sitting on this table for the past five years, thinking about, this is a really important role, right, and Northville-specific, right? You bring that Northville-specific background and so many other layers of just knowledge and expertise and enthusiasm and being an assistant principal at a high school, the largest high school, one of the largest high schools in the state of Michigan, is also no small task, and that comes with a lot of challenges and a lot of, I don't know, exciting things, too. So, I know that you bring all of those things, and so I'm, just from my seat, really excited and glad that you're our candidate.
I see so many smiles.
I have the pleasure of working with Crystal during my, during our brief crossover together at the high school, and I'm super excited to work with you in this capacity now, just her knowledge of MTSS, all of the testing that she did when I ran AP and she was running PSAT. I mean, just, she's fantastic, so we're so lucky to have you here. Welcome.
I see so many smiles. So, before you vote, Crystal, could you tell the, us and the board who's here today with you?
Yeah.
Because I see a lot of smiling faces and proud colleagues.
So, my work family is here. Tony Koski and Emily Aluia. My mom and dad are here. Ted Wright and Cheryl Wright. My children are here, Jordan and Leila, as well as Jahad and Kylie. So, my family is here. Yep, proud graduates and students. Kylie's got a little bit to go, but Jahad and Leila graduated. Jahad, 2019, and Leila, 2022, and Kylie, sixth grade, I mean, so.
Awesome. So, I would just like to comment on how delightful this moment is. I'm just soaking it in, feeling the glow from you and your family. One of the things that I noticed that's really important and unique to you is your K-12 depth of experience and leadership experience, and also, I think, the kinds of examples that I gleaned from maybe even in between the lines about making a measurable difference in the learning of kids. And that's, I'm sure, you know, has called on your, all of your skills of adaptation and individualization and rising, helping kids rise to their max in schools. And I just know that that's so important to all of us, and the parents, kids, and the board, and teachers, and staff, but under your leadership, that's just even gonna get even more vibrant and alive for us. So, thank you very much for taking this role.
Awesome.
And before you call the vote, I would just like to, a few words, Crystal, that I thought about as you were out there. And first off, I've known you for just over three years, and family, your mom, sister, dad, your own kids, always come up in conversations and some, and they're all good. I'll just look at you, that's good. She speaks highly of each of you. We're okay. But I think of words like ally, advocate, helping hand, integrity, brilliance, tenacity, loving. I'm privileged to know how you work with kids who are on the margins, kids and families who are, sometimes that they're really one of the worst moments of their life, and your grace and humility and kindness when people are struggling. And really, I think that this extends to somebody who's here in the crowd tonight, which is Tony Koski. One thing, when I first came here, that really blew me away, and I didn't see the pattern, and I didn't understand it fully until a few of those situations. You know, Tony is somebody you've learned from that can go into a situation that no parent would want to be in, but handle it in such a way where nobody feels diminished, where there's a fair process there. The high school team, including the principals, the best, I've done this 33 years, the best I've ever served beside, and I've served beside some really great people. And the fact that you're coming out of the Koski coaching tree, so to speak, to serve the district at all is stunning. And I know Ms. Polansky cannot wait to have you by her side. Ms. Pickens here as well. And as a team, I just want to say thank you for serving Northville and the kids in Northville. Karen said it, you know, Karen has gotten to know you through the high school and having a student, students there, and she's not kidding when she says clone. You know, we have been so fortunate to have you in that seat, but now your impact on kids in this very building, kids throughout the district, is going to be more than welcomed, if they vote yes, and I think they're going to. After the vote, if you would like to, I would like our building administrators, we have the Wolf Pack here, high school folks, family, if you'd like to come up and do a picture behind the board as well, this truly is one of those moments that is a milestone moment. Your daughter, your mom, your sister earned this position and spot to be here, so let's get it done.
All right, let's go ahead with the vote, then. This is exciting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. You're hired.
That is awesome.
If you guys wanna come behind, you can get in the picture, too.
Yeah.
You're gonna film that? Okay. Good day.
Should we just come down there by the?
Never would.
Should we all just, you guys wanna, yeah, let's.
Are we gonna stand up?
Yeah, we can.
Oh, okay, we're standing up?
Thank you.
Check one, two, hot mic, check two, check, check. Thank you to the board for taking the time, not only with the Moraine families and students, but also, this moment is one of those moments that I think we all hope to be able to see our own kids attain at some point in life, and to take the time to have warmth and care. We are a data-driven business, but we're also a people business. So, I just, I want to make sure the seven of you get recognized for the fact that you're okay with slowing the flow down a little bit to make sure people feel loved and cared about, and that's important. Thank you.
Exciting, it's awesome. Thank you for that. All right, I will turn it over to you, Dr. Campbell Voitel, to, for, yeah, number 11, our Instructional Programs Strategic Planning Process Agreement.
All right. I am bringing motion 54, that the board authorize an agreement with, between Northville Public Schools and the MASB for a strategic planning process totaling $11,174, as presented.
Support. Okay, we have a motion properly presented by Hector Campbell Voitel, supported by Ms. Stewart. We didn't really talk about who would be taking the next piece, but I think it might be you, Ms. Polansky. Okay. Does there need a, oh, maybe?
We did not do mic training, I'm sorry, for the mobile meetings.
Do you wanna swap with Ms. Keith?
Sorry, everybody. Thank you so much. So, just a quick overview for folks who maybe hadn't heard our larger conversation that was part of our previous committee of the whole. One of the things we have been talking about is how we marry our strategic plan with amazing continuous improvement work that folks in this district have been doing for the past two years. And one of the ways that we do that is really make sure that the strategic planning work includes lots of folks that were, that are staff members that have been part of that continuous improvement process, but also know that there needs to be a larger scope to the strategic plan. And the strategic plan needs to include constituent groups that include families, students, and we might have administrative assistants. We would have folks from all different levels and places. And one of the things that many districts do to support that kind of information gathering and synthesis is by bringing in an outside organization that can facilitate that in a way where everybody feels like they can be genuine and honest. They're not talking to a boss, they're not talking to a board member. They're sharing with this outside organizations what they think and what they think our district needs. And so, last week, we looked at two different organizations, MASB and Hanover, and today, we were looking at for one that our board was gonna say, this is the one that's the best fit for Northville to guide us in our strategic planning process. And I'm really excited with the organization that you all selected. One, because I think they presented a really cohesive plan, and two, they did it really economically, and they were less expensive as well, and they also partner well with the MYKIP plan, which is required by the MDE. So, they really understand Michigan and what Michigan school boards need and what Michigan school districts need when they're leading the strategic planning work. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for that good summary. I think that, for me, that's what really stood out in that presentation, was that they really integrate well with MDE and the MYKIP, and that's what we need, right, that there's been such a robust process in looking at all of our data and coming up with our focus, and so, how do we tie it together, and how do we also bring the community into, into that process and that conversation? So, that's why we wanted to present it also tonight as an agenda item, so that we could really make sure that the community knows that the strategic planning process is coming, and we need their involvement. And we want that, right, that that's how we can set ourselves up as a district for success, not just now, and not just two years from now, but really five years and 10 years down the road, that it's just, it's really important as education shifts and changes.
And that's, strategic planning is long-term, and that's what's, why it's so important to do this really well this year, and it's really helpful to have folks guide us through this process. While I have done this before, these folks at MASB have done it before many times with many different districts, so having them as a partner and their expertise is also crucial.
And it is useful to have a, what you might call a disinterested third party convening the small kind of input teams and groups that assemble, so everybody feels welcome to express their ideas, their hopes and dreams, to put it all out on the table, and for the consultant group, the MASB, to wrap some data around that, some comparable districts, or districts maybe aspirational for us, as well as those that are similar to us, to just help us conceptualize what is now and what could be going forward. And we've been working with a five-year plan that really came to its end in 2025, so this is particularly important to people who, you know, kids and families who are gonna be here for the next 12 years. This is the next leap forward, and includes visioning and reconsidering what is the mission. And for the board, that's kind of the level that we'll work at, is trying to draw the big circle around the work that we want to achieve, and then, of course, the administration and the leadership, the educational leaderships will, you know, interpret those kinds of goals down into how we operate in our schools. So, there's a place for everybody. I guess the reason why I'm kind of sketching it out is, there's a place for everyone, community, parent, students, and anybody who has an affiliation or even an interest. If you don't have a student in the district, if you live in this community, this school's belong to you. I hope that when the opportunity comes, you give some consideration to trying to define the future, and that's pretty exciting. So, thank you very much.
Very exciting. Thank you so much for supporting this work.
And I'd like to thank the board for, so this has actually been a two-year process. As the first aspect of it, and Devin Cadell's here right now, but the MYKIP was a two-year involvement for the pedagogical aspects of how we are gonna attend at things in our district, what are outcomes for our kids, and then bringing that into the purview of the board, like we would typically do within our regular cycle. But now, this add-on of a strategic plan, and Kim, to your point, wanting to get students and parents and all sorts of folks involved in it. And it's really exciting to see the multi-year work we've been doing now. You sometimes wonder, when are we gonna get there? When are we gonna get there? Well, we're here. And so, with the policy presentation that occurred last week from Ms. Peck, she and Ms. Irving have been working diligently to get us on pace and set there, so we can do that work together, to strategic planning with Ms. Polansky, who has done that in the past, and working with a third party to help guide us as well, I think is really important. And I know several board members take many of the MASB I think is really important. And I know several board members take many of the MASB classes. And so that also provides comfort that that organization is helping to guide our process with it. So I just want to sincerely say thank you to the board. Ms. Palansky, thanks for bringing those forward. But I can't wait to get started. Thank you.
All right, let's go ahead with the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Excited to start that process. I think it's already, you know, with the MyKit, we've already kind of done the pre-planning, so excited to move it to the next level. All right. And then, were you going to do the special services TeachTown kit for secondary students?
Just roll, roll over to the next item on the agenda is motion 55 that the board authorized the administration to award a contract to TeachTown for sixth through 12th grade students totaling $33,668.89 for the 2025-26 school year funded through general fund with a $4,800 annual cost beyond the one-year pilot as presented.
Support. Okay, we have a motion properly presented by Dr. Campbell Voitel, supported by Ms. Meyer. Anything that you wanted to share more with us? Just a couple highlights?
All right. Thank you for, one, the consideration for this. There's a lot of value, and it's really a critical piece for our students who have some different learning needs. And so something that special education has been experiencing for many years, I'm 30 years in, and we were always creating our own materials, creating our own curriculum, trying to mirror at least, or align with what's going on in general ed, but at a level that our students could learn and progress with. And that's time-consuming, and it's overwhelming, and technology has really helped our teachers so much. But having a comprehensive curriculum is something we've not had before. So we're really, really grateful for your consideration of this, because TeachTown will provide a means for our teachers to really focus on the learning outcomes for our students and the data that is coming from that. It will help us with compliance when it comes to special education law and making sure that we are providing free, appropriate public education for all students. It creates equity and accessibility opportunities for our students, because all of our students learn differently and may need things differentiated and scaffolded, and this will provide them that opportunity, all within staying within the same curriculum that is aligned with those common core standards. So that's the beauty of it, is that they're going to have age-appropriate materials, going to have age-appropriate books. They're going to have meaningful and engaging education, which is going to help with not just their academic growth, but their social growth and behavioral growth. And so those are things that are really critical for our students. It's going to solve the equity problem for teachers, because they're no longer spending hours and hours and hours recreating the wheel. We have comprehensive math curriculum for our math courses. We now have comprehensive curriculum for our special education classes. And it's going to create that access for high-quality learning experiences for our students. And just one final piece, this one slide, number four here, really just kind of bullet points some of the real key pieces that were important. It is evidence-based. That is something that is really important. We want to make sure that any materials we're using have some research behind them and have some merit and value. It provides those scripted lesson plans, but it also provides differentiation at three different levels for our varying needs. It also gives us data collection and reporting opportunities, which is really critical, because when we're looking at progress and growth for our students, trying to determine next steps and what their next goals need to be, everything has to be driven by data. And it also comes with all the manipulatives, all the materials, which is why the cost the first year is so much higher than the recurring cost, because this first year includes all of the teacher manuals, all of the student materials, all of the online access, all of the manipulatives. And so then our recurring costs really are just those online pieces, and that makes it much more affordable. And then just finally making sure that we are recognizing just the scope and sequence of what this curriculum is going to do. It is ELA, it is math, it is science, it is social studies. It also has a social skills component to it. It has a transition component for our students 18 to 26 years old. It also has a preschool component to it. So when we think about equitable access for our kids, it covers the full range of the ages that we are working with and supporting. So I think that's just really important. My hopes for this is that we'll be able to spend this year onboarding, training our teachers. That's another piece I didn't mention, is that this, this particular curriculum offers a lot of support. Not only do they give us some in-person training opportunities, they also provide classroom visits and some coaching for our teaching staff. They are available for follow-up as needed. They will work with us, because it is a large-scale rollout. And so it can be overwhelming. There are a lot of pieces and parts to it. And so they are helping support with our ACT-18 programs that we rolled out earlier this year. And they will continue to provide that support and training for our teachers also, and that access for them if they're navigating things, having some questions on what makes sense in, and how they're presenting materials. That support is built in, which is something that goes beyond. Typically, a lot of curriculums will have an initial one-day training. This is training that is going to be accessible in an ongoing fashion. So that's going to be helpful. I think I covered everything else here. Are there any?
I think one of the things that was so exciting for me is that I arrived in July, and this is one of the first things that teachers were pounding down the door and asking for. And it's really hard, because when you first look at the initial cost, I was just very worried that the answer was going to have to be no, even though there was a really compelling educational case to be made for these tools. But JD and I worked really hard to make this happen, really in partnership with some, just, we dug in a little bit. And the fact that ACT-18 is already covering this through, that Wayne Risa is really supporting most of our teachers and already was, there was really only three classrooms left. And that was, how do we find a way to get three classrooms covered? And then when we were able to convince the MDE to use $35J to cover one of those classrooms, now we're down to just two classrooms left. And it's really not a huge reoccurring cost when you consider the fact that we were able to identify other tools that we can remove as a result. So while there is a one-time cost this year for the two classrooms for the non-consumable items after this, we will be able to provide this in a neutral, cost-neutral way, and provide a much better quality experience for our kiddos. And so that's been very exciting and very rewarding. Thank you for your hard work on this, JD.
Thank you.
And I'd like to thank you, JD, and Emily, and the board. This is really a tangible, physical representation and manifestation that we serve each child in Northville, whether it's materials, personnel, or support. Ms. Keef and I were in a meeting today with the parent, and, you know, I read also, or when Ms. Grimm's piece was being read for the ABCD Award, and we talk about, and a parent in here just talks about the care and attention given their child who needed additional support. One of the things I am proudest of, of our public school system is that we serve each child in our community, regardless of the challenges that sometimes serving students with special needs can face. And I'm proud of that. There are many schools in this country who would not even entertain serving many of the students we serve, which is why I firmly believe that our tax dollars need to go to our public schools to support students. And as JD and Emily said, at first, if not for Wayne Risa, if not for some good stewardship, Devin and I were having a conversation today, you know, this district fights way, way, way above its weight class, so to speak. Out of the top nine schools in the state, we have the highest return on investment. And we can be proud of that, but it shouldn't be that much of a struggle for us to have to be as judicious as we are and to have to press the things that we have to press. Every single kid deserves to be taken care of in the way that we take care of our kids. And my hope is that the federal government and the state government understand that. And TeachTown is a perfect example. How awful would it have been to say, no, we can't do it, when the two of you are sitting there knowing, this is really, really good and really good for our kids? So I'm grateful to the board. JD did a presentation about an hour last week at Cow, and it was important to the board president and other board members that we touch upon this in a, in a setting such as this. So thank you for doing that.
I did just have a question, just for clarification for the audience. You have broken down my cost. What is ACT-18?
Good question.
ACT-18 is part of a piece of legislation that creates a funding source for special education programming. It comes through the county. So our ACT-18 programs mean that they are funded through the county, through that ACT-18 money. And that is for Cook School as an ACT-18 program. And so all of the programming there is supported by ACT-18 funds. Our self-contained autism classrooms that we have at the elementary, middle, and high school, those are also what are called ACT-18 funded programs. And so those are funded by county monies. They do not come out of the district's general fund. And the difference being with the two classrooms that we are talking about, these are locally funded classroom programs for children with special needs that are funded out of the general fund. Do you have more to add?
Yes. So, well, no, perfect, perfect explanation. It's a, mechanically, from an accounting standpoint, it is part of the general fund, but it is an ACT-18 fund. So it's a, it's a, it's a program that's separately funded. So it's, we don't call it the general fund, but we do record it in the general fund. So that's just like, you will see it in the budget and in the audit in the general fund. Sorry, clarification.
And I did like how you, like, pointed out that for the K through five, it's going to be about $27,000, but you worked very hard to get that out of a grant, so it's not coming from us. Our portion here would be about 37, but then perhaps we have some offset costs if we can cancel some others, which would be about $10,000. So I really appreciate the responsibility for the taxpayer money. So thank you.
I had made notes, and you guys covered everything that I was going to point out. So congratulations. I can just sit here and be quiet now.
Yeah, I just wanted to lift up the focus on supporting the whole child and every child. So I think that's really important. And it's also, it's a lift for teachers, right? When they're creating their own curriculum, so trying to be mindful of that, too. So thank you for finding that and bringing that to us. Ready for a vote? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Thank you so much. All right, agenda item number 13 is our Northville Association of School Administrators, NASA, 2024 to 26 tentative agreement addendum. We'll turn it over to you, Ms. Meyer.
Yes, I'd like to bring forth motion 56 that the board ratified the addendum to the tentative agreement and wage scale entered into by and between the district and the Northville Association of School Administrators, covering the period July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2026, effective November 18, 2025, as presented.
Support. Okay, we have a motion properly presented by Ms. Meyer, supported by Ms. Maurer. Hand it over to you, Ms. Peck.
So I'm going to kick this off, and there's going to be several motions that you'll be making, and they follow in similar suit. So I'm going to, I'm going to start off by just giving an overview of the memo that, that we've put together. This one is specifically for NASA, and I know Brian will have some conversations around some of our other groups as well. So as you know, over the past couple of months, the district has reached successor agreements with both the Northville Education Association and the Northville Federation of Para-Professionals. The other two remaining collective bargaining agreements, Northville Association of School Administrators, NASA, which we're talking about for this motion here, and the Northville Federation of Para-Educators are currently in the last year of a two-year contract. As previously shared with the board, the district has historically sought to revisit other employee groups, including those groups that are collectively bargained, following new contract agreements with the district, within the district that may outpace agreements that were previously reached with other employee groups. So as, as a reminder, for NASA, in September of 2024, the Board of Education and NASA ratified a two-year agreement covering both the 24-25 and the 25-26 school year. As part of that agreement, NASA members received a one-step increase in 3% wage scale lift for the 24-25 school year, as well as an additional step for the 25-26 school year. Following the review of the NASA contract, and particularly those terms that had been negotiated for the 25-26 school year, the Board of Education authorized administration to discuss a potential wage reopener with NASA. After such discussion with NASA, a tentative agreement has been reached between the parties that includes the following: an additional 3% increase to the 25-26 NASA wage scale to be paid retroactively to the beginning of the contract year. This is in parity with the new successor agreements to the other contracts that were negotiated this year. With that said, it is the recommendation for the Board of, that the Board of Education conduct a ratification vote regarding the contract wage reopener agreement between Northville Public Schools and the Northville Association of School Administrators for the 25-26 school year.
Thank you. Any comments, questions?
This is our, this is an expected adjustment that we, that we expect to reconcile the differences, right?
Yeah, yes. And the, yeah, and the board definitely wants to be sure that there is parity across all employee groups. And so that this is an expected adjustment to our successor agreements. All right, let's go ahead with the vote then. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Next, we have our 25-26 Technology Operations and Food Service and Office Support Personnel Employee Manual modifications.
Yes, I'd like to bring forward motion 57 that the board authorized the administration to revise and update the wage schedule for the prospective employee manuals through the 2025-26 school year, A, Technology Operations and Food Service Employees, and B, Office Support Personnel.
Support. Okay, motion properly presented by Ms. Meyer, supported by Mr. Frazier.
Thank you, President McIntyre and Secretary Meyer. I'm not going to go ahead and read through the entire memo, but just as Ms. Peck laid out in terms of our interest in creating some parity with, with previous bargaining groups that have, have already settled their contracts, the same holds true for our Technology Operations and Food Service Group that represented under a employee manual. And so in June of 2025, the board had approved updated terms and conditions for our Technology Operations and Food Service Employees that included the following: Technology Operations and our Licensed Practical Nurse that also falls under this employee manual experienced a one-step increase on their board-approved wage schedule for the 25-26 school year. Food Service Employees experienced a 2% wage scale increase, consistent with market, as well as a one-step increase on their board-approved wage schedule for the 25-26 school year. And then there was also an addition of a longevity stipend for those employees who have worked in the district for 10 or more years. Following review of the TOFS manual that had been adjusted for the 25-26 school year, the Board of Education authorized administration to seek adjust, to seek to adjust these agreements to provide consistency between employee groups. And so the recommendation for our TOFS group this evening is for those employees covered under the TOFS manual, the district recommends that the Board of Education approve the following: increase the wage scale for all Technology Operations and Licensed Practical Nurse Employees by 3%, retroactive to July 1, 2025. And for our Food Service Employees who had already received a 2% increase in a step this year, increase the wage schedule for all Food Service Employees by 1%, retroactive to July 1, 2025.
All right, thank you. Appreciate you bringing that forward to us. Any comments, questions? All right, standard adjustment in line with what we previously discussed. So let's go ahead with a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to bring forth motion 58 that the board ratified the addendum to the tentative agreement and wage scale entered into by and between the district and the Northville Federation of Para-Educators commencing August 24, 2024 through August 23, 2026, effective November 18, 2025, as presented.
Support. Okay, we have a motion properly presented by Ms. Meyer, supported by Ms. Stewart. Same kind of thing. Is there more that you wanted to?
Yeah, probably more.
You know, I just realized I did not cover the Office Support Personnel. I was thinking that was a separate agenda item, so my apologies for that. Do you want me to back up? I should probably back up and share that as well.
I suppose so.
Yeah, sorry about that. So, yeah, we definitely don't want to forget our Office Support employees, and we've got them included here in the packet, but oversight on my part in terms of explaining those specifics related to their employee manual. So for, back in June 2025, once again, So for, back in June 2025, once again, the board had approved updated terms and conditions to the OSP manual. And as such, our Office Support Personnel Employees experienced a one-step increase on their board-approved wage schedule for the 25-26 school year. We reviewed their manual, just as we have done with the other employee groups, and the board authorized us to make some adjustments with parity, in keeping with parity. And so the recommendation for OSP employees is an increase to the wage schedule for all Office Support Personnel Employees by 3%, retroactive to July 1, 2025. Sorry about that.
Thank you. Thanks for, yeah, bringing this, bringing us back to that. And we've already voted for that, so we're good.
Great. All right, so Para-educators. And thank you, Ms. Sandy Lynch, President, for being here this evening. Again, consistent with the review that we conducted for our other employee groups, including those bargaining units, in September 2024, the Board of Education and the Northville Federation of Para-educators ratified a two-year agreement covering both the 24-25 and 25-26 school years. As part of that agreement, the Para-educators received a one-step increase and 3% wage scale lift for the 24-25 school year, as well as an additional one-step increase and 1% wage scale lift for this school year, the 25-26 school year. Following review of the Northville Federation of Para-educators contract, and particularly those items or those terms that had been negotiated for this 25-26 school year, the Board of Education authorized administration to discuss a potential contract reopener with the Northville Federation of Para-educators. After such discussion with the Para-educators, a tentative agreement has been reached with the Para-educators that includes the following terms and conditions: An additional 2% increase to the 25-26 Para-educator wage scale to be paid retroactively to the beginning of the contract year, as well as the potential to transition from a bi-weekly pay schedule to a bi-monthly pay schedule at a future date to be determined here this school year. In addition, as part of the reopener package, the parties have tentatively agreed to a letter of understanding that would permit the district to explore additional long-term Para-educator substitutes, limited to the remainder of this 25-26 school year, in an effort to mitigate staffing challenges that will be further exacerbated by those Para-educators who are completing their student teaching during the winter and spring of 2026 through Wayne Risa's Para-to-Teacher Program. A great program, something we're excited for our Para-educators to participate in. And in fact, there's four of those individuals this year, and then an additional two next year that will be released to do their student teaching through this program sponsored by Wayne Risa. But nonetheless, it is a burden in terms of the staffing challenges it creates. And so this provides some flexibility to staff those positions. And so with all that said, there's the recommendation this evening is that the Board of Education conducts a ratification vote regarding the contract reopener agreement between Northville Public Schools and the Northville Federation of Para-educators, which includes economic and non-economic terms and conditions of employment for the school year, the 25-26 school year.
All right. No questions, comments? Good. Same thing. Different contract, and we'll take a vote next. All in favor of supporting this motion 58?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Next, we have our Non-Affiliated Individual Employee and Central Office Leadership Team Contracts Modifications.
Yes, I'd like to bring forward motion 59 that the board authorized the administration to approve the modifications to the Non-Affiliated Individual Employee and Central Office Leadership Team Contracts and Wage Scales as presented.
Support.
All right, motion properly presented by Ms. Meyer, supported by Dr. Campbell Voitel.
So I think you're seeing a pattern here. So we're going to see the same pattern for these next two motions, including this one, the non-affiliated and the COLT contracts. I won't go through the memo that you have before you. I'll just highlight that you have these memos. It follows the NASSA. It is the recommendation for a 3% wage schedule lift for the 25-26 school year retroactive. But I also want to point something else out to you. You know, the memos that we've provided outline the recommendation for non-affiliated COLT and the superintendent contracts to be adjusted in parity with our other groups presented here today. But I want to take a moment and expound on why it's important, because sometimes these things can get lost in the weeds. The proposed adjustments to the non-affiliated and superintendent contracts are necessary to maintain competitive and equitable compensation structures across leadership roles. You've heard me talk about salary compression, which occurs when pay differences between positions become too narrow, which reduces incentives for staff to seek advancement, which ultimately creates challenges in recruitment and retention. Earlier in the agenda, we adjusted the NASSA, the NASSA or the principal's contract salary because of this salary compression issue that was created between NEA and NASSA contracts. Those adjustments ensures that the principal salary scale encourages teachers to pursue leadership roles. These similar adjustments are required for non-affiliated staff and superintendents. So a simple way to put this becomes, it's simply supply, demand, and market value. These ecosystems, teacher, principal, district administrator, superintendent, are dependent upon one another and help ensure that our compensation systems remain aligned and sustainable. This is a strategic measure to protect the strength of our leadership pipeline and the quality of education in our district. I just wanted to make sure that I shared that with you. I know we've had conversations about this in other areas, but I just wanted to put a bow on it for a full understanding as we had the opportunity, Brian and I had the opportunity to work with both collectively bargain groups and individual employee groups, that that became much more solidified to us as we were researching not only best practices but comps.
Yeah, thank you for being on top of that, right? That it's, it takes a lot of effort and a lot of detail work to make sure that we are offering competitive compensation that attracts and retains staff across all these different areas that we really need in order for our school district to be as amazing as it is. So, thank you. Okay. Did we already take, yeah, did we do the motion? Do you want to read the?
I did do the motion.
Oh, yeah, I did not write who. Oh, I do have that. I just didn't write it down, sorry. Karen Meyer and then Ms. Campbell Voitel. Dr. Campbell Voitel, my apologies. Let's go ahead with a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. And these mics are really sensitive tonight. Maybe it's me. Next, our agenda item. So anyways, congratulations. Thank you so much for that effort on that. And then next, 17 is our Superintendent Contract Modifications.
Yes, I'd like to bring forth motion 60 that the board approved the modification to the 2025-28 Superintendent Contract Wage Scale as presented.
Support.
Okay, motion properly presented by Ms. Meyer, supported by Dr. Campbell Voitel. Do we have anything?
I think just as a reminder, it's the same parity that we're requesting or asking of the Board of Education, that the superintendent contract reflects an additional 3% increase to the superintendent wage scale as attached in Appendix A in your packet.
Great.
I mean, I think just to highlight what Ms. Peck already said is, you know, we've talked extensively during the teacher contract negotiation that it's historically what Northville does is whatever happens in those big contracts, it is mirrored in all the other contracts that we have with the district, just to make sure that, you know, when you raise one group, the rest goes with it. So it's something that historically Northville does, so it's nothing, nothing new.
I'm thinking of two things that happened at the meeting earlier tonight that kind of tie, I think, really nicely into it. Part of the presentation that the students gave, it said that the Maureen was made up of a constellation of unsung heroes. I loved that line.
That was awesome.
It was. And I think that's true for the entire district, right? So we want to show parity throughout because there's so many people that are involved in making our school districts and students successful and making sure that they're lifted up. When we lift, you know, a rising, what is it, the rising tide lifts elbows? So I'm very excited about that. And then also, I'm thinking about Ms. Mohammed. And, you know, when you were talking about that compression scale being, we've had a lot of turnover. And it's unnerving, you know, because we've had wonderful people in position, and you want to be able to attract new people that want to do this. And when I think about her and her desire and willingness to step up to do this, like Dr. Weber said earlier, like this is a people business, right? But people also are earning a wage, right? So we want to make sure that we're comparable to other districts and paying accordingly, and that all groups are incentivized and respected through their earnings. So I think that tonight really ties in really well with what we're doing right here, and I think it's very important.
Yeah. Agreed. All right, let's go ahead with a vote then. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Thank you very much for bringing that to us.
And Karen, if I could say, throughout the entire process of negotiation and what we look at and what we do, there was a face in my mind every single day that we would meet or I would talk with Brian, Rebecca, or Devin, and it's Cook in one of our buildings. It's a woman that I've had the pleasure of knowing who gives me the heads up when it's Chicken Tender and Mashed Potato Day. So I head over. How many times I've walked into her kitchen to see she and her crew down a person or two, working so hard to give our kids what they deserve, in that idea of balance across the system, and why sometimes decisions or things that we do may not make sense to the general public or people, but the integrity of taking care of that entire constellation, so each of those stars can shine brightly and be recognized for it, is something I'm exceptionally grateful for the team I get to serve besides sitting across me, and for the team that I get to serve sitting to my right in the Board of Education. It's not always easy. We are bound to parameters of conversation, and we are bound to things that we can say and do. But I have to say that she was always front of mind, and she was simply the embodiment of what Karen just said. The 400 other folks in the district who definitely go to serve in conjunction and work together to serve our kids well. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, do we have any added agenda items?
None.
Okay. And then second opportunity for public comment. I don't think we have any comment cards. Okay. Then that brings us to 8:14. Our, we are adjourned. That's our meeting. Awesome meeting tonight at Maureen. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.